Thank you very much for being here and welcome to the debate for the Williamson County School Board candidate sponsored by Brent Word Communication. I'm Mike Williams, the moderator for the debate tonight. We're going to be asking each of the candidates questions. They'll have 90 seconds to respond and if they need to follow up, we'll allow them to follow up a little bit after that. We'll go to Vicki Vogt.
Sure, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. My name is Vicki Vogt and I am the representative of the 12th District and I've been married for 28 years, almost 29. We moved to Williamson County almost two decades ago. We came here for the schools and I have two children, my husband and I have two children that are, I have a 26-year-old daughter and a 21-year-old son. They're both products of Williamson County schools. They did exceptionally well and that was one of the reasons I was encouraged to run for school board because I felt it had been such an honor and privilege to have my children enrolled in the schools and I was so excited to see that great things happening that I wanted to be a part of it. As far as the school board members' role and the role of a school board, I think the role of the school board is one of oversight and I think the role of a school board member is to first and foremost be a good listener and someone who is willing to collaborate with others for the greater good of moving a school district forward. That would be my answer. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Eric Welch. I represent the 10th District. This is my first term on the board. I ran four years ago with the encouragement of a lot of our parents to seek this position. I've been married to my wife, who is much better looking than I am, for the past 18 years. I have a son that recently graduated from Centennial High School and is on his way to the engineering program at Knoxville and a younger son that's a rising 8th grader over at Freedom Middle in that sense. In terms of the role of the board, we hire the superintendent to run the schools, but the role of the board is to make sure that the school is run well or that the school district is run well. And we do that through our policy which sort of sets the parameters by which the superintendent operates and implements various changes in the board. During that time, the past four years, we've been extremely successful at this. We've had the fastest improvement in the shortest amount of time than we ever had in the history of Williamson County schools. Thank you.
Going down to Ms. Anderson.
I'm Pat Anderson. I'm the 8th District representative to the Williamson County School Board. I've had the honor and privilege of serving the constituents in District 8 for the past 12 years. My late husband and I have been residents of the Grousson community for over 30 years. I have two children, both who graduated from Williamson County schools and have also done exceptionally well. 12 years ago, I was approached by a group of individuals and asked if I would consider running for the board. They felt that I could have a positive impact on Williamson County schools and their success. I think my record speaks for itself in that regard. The board's primary function is given to us under the statute. We are the governing body of this, of the school district. We are the policymaking body. We hire a superintendent. We approve and adopt a budget on the recommendation of the superintendent and we grant tenure upon the recommendation of the superintendent as well. Thank you very much for having this opportunity tonight.
Let's move on to Mr. Galbraith.
Hi, my name is Jay Galbraith and I am running unopposed to fill a vacant seat for the 6th District. I'm a lifelong resident of Williamson County, born and raised here, now choose to, just like many of you and many of the residents of Williamson County, choose to raise their children here because it is a wonderful place to raise a family, founded by, I guess, with the strong schools is the, is the main reason that we hear everybody coming to Williamson County. I, I'm a CPA, have been for the last 20 some odd years, had various experience in working with different industries, look forward to, to applying that, that philosophy, that fiscal philosophy and helping look at one of the main goals is that is making a recommendation on the, on the budget to the county commission. My family, I have married my high school sweetheart, just had our 16th anniversary, have five children, two of which are embarrassed that I'm going to call them out in the back and so I appreciate them being here, but they range in ages from five to 13. And as far as the role of a school board, they said it well. It's, it's an oversight board, which I have experience working on. I think representing constituents, whether it be your district or the entire school board body, I think you have to listen and take, take all the points of view into consideration and at the end of the day, we're all trying to do what's best for our, for our kids and the students of Williamson County to make sure that we're, we are continuing to move in the right direction.
Ms. Morris?
Good evening. My name is Melody Morris. I've been married to my husband Ken for almost 29 years. We have five children ranging in age from 16 to 25. Three of our children have graduated from Williamson County schools, graduated from Independence High School. I have a junior at Independence right now, a six-foot-five saxophone player in the band who will be pretty frustrated that I just said that. But we have really enjoyed being involved in Williamson County schools. I grew up in Middle Tennessee. I grew up in Davidson County and had the privilege of serving with my father on the Citizens Advisory Committee for Education while I was at McAvick High School. When we first married, we lived in Chicago and our children went, were primary age during those years and as a result, we homeschooled our children for a time. And then after serving overseas, we came back to Williamson County, settled in the Thompson Station, Spring Hill area and have been happily involved in the public schools of Williamson County since 2005 and have had a very good experience here. My understanding, I'm running for, for an open seat. Janice Mills is retiring from the District 2 seat and I'm running for an open seat. My understanding of the role of a school board member, the things that have been expressed here, in addition, I understand it to be a public service role. Public, something that happens in the open, in front of everybody and service, something that is offered for the benefit of others. And I am excited about the opportunity to offer myself as a public servant in this way. I have a great love for public schools, having been a product of public schools myself and having seen the, the gift that Williamson County schools have been for my children.
All right. Now, so that not, so that nobody has to go first all the time, we'll start with Eric on, on this question and then kind of work our way around that way. But, you know, it's widely, it's widely known or widely thought that Williamson County schools are the best schools district in the state and there's probably a lot, a lot of evidence to back that up. Do you think the teachers' salaries reflect that they're the, were the best, that were the best school system in the state?
No, they, they do not. Unfortunately, it's one of the challenges that we have as a school district is that we're, we're not able to pay as competitive a salary as many of the school districts are around us. And if you look at the teachers that have, have left the district, we always ask them about, you know, what are they leaving for? And one of the top reasons that they are leaving is we're losing a lot of our teachers to Metro where in many cases, they can go 15 miles up the road and they can earn a, a salary increase of, you know, around $10,000 in many cases. The challenge we have though is that our budget is extremely lean. I think a lot of people falsely assume because we're in such an affluent county that we invest a heavy amount in our schools as well. The truth of the matter is Tennessee ranks 48th in the nation in what it invests in education and Williamson County Schools is 74th of the 137 school districts in Tennessee. So we're in the bottom half of the state ranked 48th in the nation. Now, of our budget, about 85% goes towards teacher salaries and benefits. We, we recognize that, you know, the teacher in the classroom is the driving force behind educating our children. The challenge is, you know, if you do a 1%, a 2%, a 3% increase in it, it's a huge increase in our budget overall. So we were very proud that we were able to provide teachers a 2% raise this time, making up for the, you know, what the state had promised but was not able to deliver, but I don't feel that it is enough unfortunately.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson?
I concur with Mr. Welch. I do not believe that our teachers' salaries reflect the work that they do. I think that they deserve a higher salary and we have worked very hard in recent years to level the playing field and the salary schedule for our teachers here in Williamson County. I don't know that the community realizes that the BEP funding helps to provide support from the state for our teachers, but Williamson County's ability to pay, we have about 2,200 teachers, we end up paying 300 of those salaries independently without any assistance from the state. So we are heavily funded locally. As Mr. Welch said, we, we have a wonderful working relationship with our county commission. We have a very lean budget. 85% of our budget goes towards salaries and 65% of the county's budget goes to the funding the schools. So I do not believe that our teachers are compensated adequately for their time. Thank you.
Jay?
I will agree. I think when you, when you ask anybody, it's, nobody's ever putting teacher salaries on the chopping block. That's, it should be and obviously it's the biggest line item in the budget outside of the capital that you have to, that we have to spend to build the, build the schools. But no, our, our teachers are, are not paid what we should. I think we've, we've taken some steps and, and will constantly take some steps to, to rectify that. Unfortunately, we are making a recommendation to the county commission and when you get to the county level, although schools takes up a, the lion's share of, of the budget, there are some, there are some budget restrictions that they, that they have. They're not going to run a deficit. They can only fund what they can, what they can afford and, and so it does, it does provide a limitation. So you say, all right, we either have to provide a, provide more, more revenue to, to the schools or we have to cut back on something or we, we look at more targeted teacher salaries that providing a flat across the board does present a, a significant fiscal impact, but if you target across the board, you can, you can save if you look at your, your best teachers, some of the great ones that you want to keep, you are able to, to keep those just on a more targeted basis.
Melody?
I agree. One of the things that's been of great interest to me, looking statistically at the way we pay our teachers compared to the way surrounding counties in Tennessee pay their teachers is getting to the point where we're able to be more competitive. I think having a highly effective enthusiastic teacher in every classroom is the bedrock of success in Williamson County schools, that along with participation from parents and families. And I would love to see us find ways. Having not served on the board before, I'm not as intimately acquainted with the ins and outs of the budget, but I would love to find ways to be able to compensate our teachers. I'm aware of a lot of instances where teachers are asked to do additional work, for example, conducting training sessions for other teachers and, and they don't receive additional compensation for that kind of thing. I would, I would love to find ways to compensate our teachers in a, in a way that is more equivalent with the service they're providing to our school system.
Well, as you talked about teacher salaries, obviously that talked about revenue and, and then that, I'm not going to ask anybody if they're for or against a tax increase because we all know we're against, we're for lower taxes and against tax increases. However, under the system that we have in Williamson County, the school board requests money, the county commission appropriates an amount and then the county commission, the county commission approves the tax rate. Do you think there's a better system where the, that, that might be put in place or where the, the school board took more responsibility for the tax rate? Ms. Anderson?
My experience as a member of the board and as a member of the community for the past 30 years is that our current process works very nicely. It is an accountability level there, I believe, for our county commission to be the funding body for the school budget. We've worked very hard over the past 12 years to build those relationships, not only with the school board, but with the school board and the county commission and that has worked very nicely. Do we have everything that we would desire to have? No, but we work nicely together. We have made concessions. You know, it's very difficult in a school district such as ours where we are continually growing to meet the needs and, and our county commission has stepped up every time to meet those needs to, to provide what we need to for the students. So I believe that, that our current process has worked very nicely for our community. Thank you.
Jay?
Is there a better system? I don't think so. I think the, the alternative is to, is to, is to set up a, a taxing authority like the special school district that, and I don't think that's, I don't think that's appropriate. I'm not in favor of that at all. I do like the, I do like the accountability. As frustrating as it might be for, for the school board to go and submit a budget and have it sent back to work on, it's, it's nothing that we don't deal with every day in the, in the real world. I mean, sometimes you, you have a budget, you submit it to the board, they think there's still room for improvement and so you come back and go back to the drawing board and see, see, see where you can find common ground. I think we, we've got limited financial resources and we are going to continue to be a low, low tax county with limited funding from the state and so we're, we are challenged. I think the opportunity is to make sure that when, as we continue to face our rapid growth, that we're growing in a way that minimizes the, the financial impact on that. So we need to think about how we, how we grow, how we're, how we're building schools, how it, think, we need to, we need to think a little bit outside the box and, because it is, it is very expensive to build another $30 million campus and we, we need to make sure that we're not doing that unless we absolutely have to. I think we've done a fairly good job, but there's some opportunities out there to improve.
Melody?
I think the checks and balance system that we have with the county commission is a good system. I, I sometimes wonder and I'm not, I'm not, certainly not an expert in this, but I sometimes wonder about the way the state funding formulas work. I sometimes wonder if Williamson County, because of our influence, gets a little short-changed in the state funding formula. That's not anything we have any control over, but something I would be interested in having some dialogue about.
Vicki?
Yes. I feel strongly that when, when I was in the, in the seats out there, that I felt like there was a certain checks and balances that was accommodating the taxpayer out there. They were assured that the budget had been vetted thoroughly and that there was, by all parties, the school board and the county commission had agreed that in fact, a new school needed to be built or added on to or additional programs needed to be brought forth. So I, I do feel that it is a good system. There are frustrations inherent in it, but I think it is incumbent upon the school board to present a budget and justify it and, and explain and make sure that we're in constant conversations with all of our stakeholders as well as our county commissioners. It's, it's about communication and, and that's key and I think everyone on the county commission and the school board pretty much are aligned as far as wanting the best schools for Williamson County.
I agree with most of what's been said already, so not, not to just restate what has been done, I, I want to build kind of on what Melody said, which I think was a great point, is, is looking at the state funding formula. And one of the things that I think would be very helpful to a district like Williamson County in particular is that we had a, lost some of our growth dollars this year with the state funding formula. And for a school district like Williamson County that has such a stellar reputation that is the reason why families like, like mine for instance, a decade ago moved here for, for the outstanding schools, the, the growth is exploding. And so losing those dollars, the, the growth dollars impacts us in a, you know, very large manner, for lack of a better word, exponentially so, more than, than several other districts. So that is something that, you know, I wish would change at the state level, that funding formula is, is returning some of those growth dollars, which would very much help our budget.
Great. I got to tell you, I've done this from over, this is the first time I've done this from over here. I've been up there before and this is easier.
Want to tread?
Not, not on your life. You know, the, the big elephant in the room this year in education all over the country has been the, the words Common Core. And if you will, tell, tell us, tell us, and we're going to start with Jay this time, tell us how you feel about Common Core, what you would change about it and, you know, and the difference in a curriculum and a standard.
Sure.
If you can do that in 90 seconds.
Absolutely. No, no problem at all. No, I, I'm not a fan of Common Core from its inception. I, I think it was, it was passed before, before anybody knew what the, what the Common Core standards were and then it was put in place by the, by the governors all across the country and then we see what it is. And what it is, in my opinion, is, is untested standards. They have, there's no track record to, to go by and so we're, we're all, we're all part of the work in progress that is, that is Common Core. Now, what is it? It's a, it is a set of standards. It's different than, than our standards. I think, I think most, most educators, I believe, would agree that, that the standards are better, but I think most everybody asked honestly would also agree that there are plenty of, of the standards that, in varying degrees of number, that are either not good educational backing or are placed at the wrong developmental level. And so I have, I'm glad that park testing was put in place because I do think the standards are, are, it's not standards alone, it's standards and curriculum and testing that all have to, have to be done together, but I think we need to, we'll, we'll continue to evaluate how we can change it.
Melody?
Well, this has been an interesting topic during this campaign and election season. I've, I've done a lot of research, a lot of reading on Common Core, a broad spectrum of ideas and opinions about Common Core. It's been, it was, it was interesting to me to, to read how Common Core standards came to be developed and then how they came to be adopted. And I think there were some real problems along the way with lack of transparency and state-level government people signing off on standards that had yet to be written. However, in talking to a lot of school administrators and educators, they, they are standards, they are not curriculum and they have been worked into the curriculum of Williamson County schools for the last three years and our students have done better over the past three years on test scores. The standards call for a higher level of critical thinking. Are they perfect standards? No. There were not enough child development specialists, in fact, there were not any child development specialists involved in the final round of, of creation of the standards and I think that was a huge flaw. However, in working them into the curriculum at Williamson, Williamson County, I know some adjustments have been made and I know there are other adjustments that probably need to be made. I don't think that, I, I don't think that throwing them out is something that can be done without a lot of questions being asked and answered in how exactly that would be accomplished and what they would be replaced with.
Okay. My turn? Well, I'd have to say that I was not necessarily in agreement with the way Common Core was brought about. Anytime you do sweeping educational reform, you're going to have some backlash. My approach to things is more collaborative and I, I think there, there was a feeling that this was a top-down approach and I, I think we've had other instances. I think No Child Left Behind had unintended consequences. I think education reform has to be done more slowly than it's been attempted in the recent past. Having said that, I want to piggyback on what Ms. Morris has said about the critical thinking component. That has turned out to be a, a very important component to, to not over, to not overlook. It's already being accomplished through the ACT tests, those we don't have any control over. I think the critical thinking segment of any standards going forward need to be a part of the equation. I have not seen in Williamson County a real problem with the Common Core as far as standards because we layered onto it a curriculum. We look at the Common Core standards as basically minimum standards, a minimum speed limit, so to speak. And by layering on a rigorous curriculum, we're in the fast lane. So I haven't been on the receiving end of complaints about Common Core from parents or teachers in my district.
Eric?
Mike, I'm sorry, can you repeat the question because there was a second part of that that I want to make sure I address because I think we've talked about the, the first part.
We're asking, what's the difference in a standard and a curriculum? If you're against Common Core, what do you think, think's detrimental about them?
That, that was it right there. I'm sorry, difference between standards and curriculum. Thank you, I appreciate it. So I think we all have questions and concerns about Common Core, as, as do I, and I think we've all been very transparent about that. I think what we really need to find is what Common Core is because there's a lot of misunderstanding about it and, and what it is, is a basic set of standards. It's minimum standards that the state has agreed upon and if you go back, you know, years and years and years, the state of Tennessee has always had minimum standards that the, the state sets, that local districts like ours follows. If you compare the current standards, Common Core, to the previous ones, which are the SPI, Student Performance Index, there's actually only about 10% difference between the two of them. A lot of organizations, Manhattan Institute for one and, and the Fordham Institute, these are both right-of-center think tanks, both agree that, that they're more rigorous. We did a survey, 75% of our principals thought it was more rigorous, only 8% disagreed in that sense. So when you start talking about standards, we're really not impacted so much because we use Williamson County standards, which are much higher. We expect a lot more of our students than just meeting the floor. We expect them to be up at the ceiling. When you talk about curriculum, Williamson County Schools sets its own curriculum as well because we use Williamson County standards to build upon it that way. The challenge we have is, is not the standards themselves, but the actual integration, which has been a little bit rough from the state in some cases. Online testing, have enough bandwidth, have enough computers, things like that. And so I think that's the challenges that, that we need to work around.
Okay. Well, the next question, where do we start? We're going to start with Ms. Morris this time. You, you actually started hitting on something that was, is in the, in our next question here, but apparently there's an assessment on its way very soon on Common Core. Are we prepared for that and from a technology standpoint?
I don't think our schools are prepared currently from a technology standpoint, not if, not if the technology requirements are the same as what I understood them to be under the park assessment. In some conversations that I had, the amount of computers per pupil was way beyond what is currently available in our school system, even with BYOT. So, no, I'm, I'm, I'm really interested to see how this is going to play out because I, if, if this is going to be, if this assessment, as I understand it, is going to be another on, online kind of assessment, then we're not prepared technologically for it yet.
Okay. Come on back.
Okay. So I would again, piggyback on Ms. Morris. The fact is that the state of Tennessee is not ready to go to online testing, the entire state. And I, I think we, we really need to work towards having very blunt conversations as far as what we can and can't accommodate in this. This is a totally different test and we need to be very careful going forward. I have grave concerns about the testing and I think that's one of the reasons that we took up the resolution in the spring and we made it clear that we were concerned about the testing going forward and our ability to accommodate it. And as one of the very best school districts in the state of Tennessee, if, if Williamson County has concerns, you can bet the rest of the state does as well. We, we also need to understand that we're going to be holding teachers accountable to this test and we need to be careful about how we go forward with that. We need to have thoughtful conversation. We need to, we need to be at the table and have our voices heard on this. This, this is definitely something we want to, to be involved with and at the table on. Thank you.
Mr. Welch?
Well, when you talk about kind of the online assessment coming, I, I think what you're referring to, Mike, is the, the park assessment, which was put on hold by the, the state of Tennessee. And then the following year, we're going to have an RFP to decide what that new assessment is. So at this point, we, we don't know what that assessment will be and what that assessment will look like. But to answer your question directly, in terms of, of being ready for a pure online test, we as a district are meeting all of the requirements, the minimum standards for it and everything that, that the, the state nationally has set for it. I don't think that's enough. It's something that we need to work with. It's something that we have been working with in that sense, from both a bandwidth perspective, but also from a hardware perspective and, and having enough computers and laptops and other devices for our students to take the assessment on. This is a incredibly huge budget item, one that we did not get enough funding for. So we've been doing the, the BYOT, the Bring Your Own Technology Program for several years now anticipating this. We've also been reaching out to the community, having the new cows, computers on wheels, a lot of donations, you know, for these devices in that sense, so that we would have enough. So we, we do meet all of the, the standards that we have to have for it, but I think it needs to be a little bit more robust still and, and we're continuing to working towards that.
Ms. Anderson?
I would agree and concur with the thoughts that have been expressed around the table this evening, but I want to make sure that the community understands that the park assessment, which was originally developed to be the testing module for the Common Core standards, is not going to be administered anywhere in the state of Tennessee. The state legislator, state legislature voted back during session to delay the park testing for one year, which would allow the TCAP test to be the test administered across the state for the 2014-15 school year. Recently, the governor and the commissioner of education notified the park assessment that Tennessee would not be participating in the park assessment. And they will be, as Mr. Welch said, they have put that out for bid, and so there will be the development of a new assessment to measure the success of our students with the new standards.
Mr. Gabbard.
Are we prepared? Maybe, I guess if they, if they say that we've met the minimum standards, then I'll trust them, I'm not really sure. What I, what I know is, when we, when we try to do a system-wide assessment online this spring, the system was down, and so the students were told that we had to push it back a day. And so, so maybe that was the trial run to see if we were, it ended up being a trial run to see if we were ready, and no, I think we're, I think we're not. And I, and I'm glad that the, that the park is not going to be implemented, that we are going to come up with a new, from the state, coming down with a, with a different testing mechanism. And I certainly hope that as they're doing that, that they can review the Common Core standards at the same time. And maybe there's, maybe with a different set of testing, there's a different set of standards that works, and we can, we can review those, or they can review those at the state level, and we can certainly participate in that review process as well.
Ms. Morris.
I think you began with.
I started with you, okay.
Yeah.
The moderator's lost.
Mike, can I add something real quick?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I just want to correct thing, and one thing, Jay, was, there was a problem with the software that was being done, and you're correct, and that was a major issue. The software itself did have issues with everyone going on, but that was not the infrastructure here locally within Williamson County Schools. So just want to make that clarification, that it was not our bandwidth, our computers, our internal network here within Williamson County that had the problem. It was the larger software issue that we, quite frankly, don't have any control over. But you're correct, it was a major issue and a major concern.
Anybody else want to make another comment about, yes ma'am?
I do. I do think that when the state went to this idea about doing online testing, the unintended consequences is that it ends up being an unfunded mandate, because throughout the state of Tennessee, a lot of districts did not end up having the money set aside to bring their infrastructure up to compatibility with this type of testing. And when I talked about having a seat at the table to have more conversation about this, I think as one of the best, as the best performing school district in the state of Tennessee, I think we need to have a voice in how the vendor is picked for this next test.
Great. Let's move off of Common Core for a second, and we're starting back here again, right?
Okay.
All right. Let's go to, we're a high-growth school district, we've already talked tonight about how we've, we lost a lot of growth money, and we're going to have to be building more schools. Tell us what you see, sort of as an open-ended question, where you see schools being built, where you think we're going to, we're going to need to build schools, and how often should we be, should we, are we going to require rezoning, and when do you think that might happen?
My answer to that, that's a pretty dangerous question, this became a very hot seat with that question. I have to say that when we moved here almost 20 years ago, it was a dynamic and growing Williamson County, and it hasn't, it hasn't really stopped. There was a little blip around 2008, but the truth is, this is a dynamic place to work, live, and play. And, you know, the secret's out, everybody knows to come here for all that we have. We're going to continue to have to rezone. The growth that we're looking at, there's a subdivision in my area that's called Lad Park, it's behind the Agriculture Center, I couldn't get over how big it was. We need to really have conversations about impact fees. Growth does not pay for itself, this is discussed over and over and over again, and we're not coming up with any solid answers. I see potential growth happening in the Brentwood area. We have a lot of churn in that area, a lot of students coming in, we have additional needs for potentially another elementary school, and I can't say for sure we're the best placement for a high school will be in the future. It may be in that area as well, but it's going to depend on land availability. We have to work within the framework of our budgets. So for the foreseeable future, rezoning will be a reality in Williamson County.
Eric.
Well, the next one will be Nolansville. You know, I think that's an obvious answer, we're currently building that one right now, a K-8 elementary, middle school, as well as a high school. Beyond that, we've had some discussions about a Northwest high school in the distant future, but really, it will be the growth that defines where those new schools are built. The Board of Education does not have any approval authority over development and construction within the county, we're a reactive body, so where the growth occurs, then we need to adjust accordingly. In terms of how often we rezone, it's really a matter of, you know, as it's necessitated, as schools become overcrowded and we can't properly provide services to students. What we've done, though, is four years ago, we did a countywide rezoning, we looked at everything, and not just rezone students, but really, we set up a system of feeder patterns based upon proximity and school capacity, you know, other parameters that, for the past four years, has worked really well. And with only two minor adjustments, we haven't had to have any rezoning since then, which was kind of a continuous cycle before that, so we're very proud. When the Nolansville school opens up, there's the potential that we won't have to do any rezoning then either, other than moving the overcrowded Ravenwood students that have been zoned to Nolansville that way. So I know that's kind of a very generic answer, but that's, you know, just kind of how we operate as well.
Ms. Anderson.
The board actually adopts, upon the recommendation of the superintendent and staff, a five-year capital outlay plan, and on that plan, we identify areas of growth across the county based upon the information that we have from our planning departments, to try to project where we will possibly need to have a new school constructed. Currently, we have five schools identified, or five areas of the county identified for a location of a new school, understanding that this document is a fluid document, and it moves dependent upon where that growth actually becomes fruition, comes into fruition. I'll give a recent example of, when you think about growth, we're working with planning departments on new construction, which is a good indicator of where we will potentially need to place new schools. We are experiencing an extreme growth spurt in the Brentwood area, in an area where there is no new growth. So we have empty nesters or older families leaving the area, with younger families moving back into the area to repopulate those schools, which is creating some tightness in those schools. But we have currently, as Mr. Welch indicated, we have three new schools that will be opening in 2016 in the Nolansville area. We are looking at a school, for some possible school property in this, excuse me, for an elementary school in the Spring Hill area, and potentially, the next high school will be located somewhere in the northwest corner of the county. Thank you.
So I just happen to live right smack dab in the middle of the hypergrowth that there, that everyone has been referring to, and this is the issue for the people in our part of the community. And it's the fact that some of the people in some of the newer neighborhoods had been, have been rezoned more than a handful of times in just a few more than a handful of years. And so it's very, it's very stressful. I got a call today from a buddy of mine, thinking that because I'm going to be on the school board, that I know where zone, future zonings are going to happen, and so I know we're always going to be put in that situation. But what I want to see, a five-year plan is great, I want to see a very, it's, there's going to be lots of errors and lots of, it's going to be lots of estimation, but I want to see a longer-term plan with, if the Brentwood area does double, or, we'll take that because it's the highest growth right now. If it doubles in population, what does that look like? But we, the staff operates under the assumptions that we agree on as a board, and that is that we've got one and a half middle schools per high school, and that we've got, we set the size of the school in advance. And so I want to, I want to think about, how do we do that? Can we, can we start expanding schools versus building new ones? Can we change the feeder pattern like they did at Brentwood Middle, Brentwood High, where you only have one middle school feeding one high school, and then try to do that expansion? There are lots of other ideas that we can, that we can operate, other than just the framework that we've got today.
No, I know this has been a source of frustration, I have a very good friend who was talking to me about the, kind of the whiplash zoning of one subdivision close to where I live, and that is very traumatic and difficult at times for families. I know we have been in the situation where, with an elementary school 1.7 miles down the street, we've gone, you know, nine miles the other direction to an elementary school because that's where we were zoned, and that turned out well for our family after we got over the initial frustration of the additional travel time that was involved. But this is an issue that is going to obviously constantly be a source of frustration on the school board in trying to come to terms with the best answer. I have heard Dr. Looney say on several occasions that he would love to have at least a three-year span of time where no rezoning was needed. I, like Jay, I would love to see a longer span of time than that, where we'd be able to count on that rezoning, and looking at expansion of schools as opposed to building new schools. I don't know what the answers are, but I certainly would like for us to explore as many options as possible to keep the feeder patterns intact and keep families in a zoning, in a predictable zoning pattern for as long as possible.
You started with me on the phone.
All right. It's hard to keep up. Where are you going to start? Let's talk about textbooks for just a second. And that's been a contentious issue throughout this campaign and for a while. This last year, when new textbooks were adopted, you put, you made, the school board made the textbooks available to the public at the central office, and it's my understanding that no one came. If you're re-elected or if you're elected to the school board, can you think of a better way for outreach than just making them available at the school board? And do you, do you, do we, do our teachers do a good job of nominating textbooks? So, start with Eric.
Sure. Just give me the easy one, huh, Mike? You're correct, we actually had six dates that we made the textbooks available, each of those was three and a half hours. At the time, we did a 3:30 to 7 o'clock, I believe those were the times roughly, so that parents, whether that was, you know, at work or late in the day or early in the day, would get to it. And one of the things that we've talked about is maybe more of a nine to five going forward to even increase the available hours. In terms of callouts, we did, I think it was newspaper, radio, we did email, we're going to do phone callouts as well next time. So it's really something that we do want to do, we want to get parents out there and get them involved that way. The second half, and these are already planned for the following year, not just something that we would like to do, it's something that we are planning on doing. The second part of it is, do our teachers do a good job of it? I think we've got the best teachers in the state by far, I think our teachers are subject matter experts that we choose for this. In many cases, our teachers are also parents in our schools as well, so they also have a vested interest on multiple levels. So yes, I think they do a great job in picking out our textbooks. There's, you know, there is no perfect textbook out there, there are some challenges, and there are groups out there that like to find a particular sentence in a book and take it out of context and hold it up, and use it as proof for what, you know, our entitled curriculum is based out of. But all in all, holistically, I think our teachers do a phenomenal job, and the results speak for themselves.
Ms. Anderson.
The school board has a policy that speaks to the adoption of textbooks and how that process works, and we have always followed that process. As Mr. Welch indicated, we have a strong trust for our teachers, those that are in the classroom, who understand what the, going back to the standards, what the standards are that they need to meet in order to give instruction to our students. We work very hard to communicate with our community. We have, in the past, had textbook reviews in our school buildings. Due to security issues, we moved that to a more central location so that we did not have a negative impact on security in our buildings, so that parents could attend those reviews. As you indicated, we did not have anyone, except two members of the press, come and review the textbooks that were up for adoption this year. We did have an opportunity, we had a group of individuals that submitted to the board members comments that, where they had actually gone to one of the satellite sites to review the textbooks. I did review their comments. Not all of those individuals were parents or teachers from our district, they were just an array of different individuals from the area that did review those textbooks. But we do trust our teachers and understand that textbooks are but one resource that a teacher uses in the classroom to give instruction to the students. Thank you.
So, I realize that not, that nobody came. I know I didn't, I don't think anybody in this room did. I would love to see, to see it more readily available, to, if it's possible, I'm just throwing, I don't even know if it's possible to, from a licensing standpoint, to have it online, I'm sure there's probably something against that, which is why they weren't provided, but that would be, that would be a very easy way to get more people, give more people access to review that. It'd obviously be a username and password type scenario that you would request. Do the teachers do a good job in reviewing? I think they, I think by and large, they do, but is, but is there much room for improvement in the current textbook selection process? And I think there is. I think there could be, there could be more stakeholders at the table responsible for providing the recommendation ultimately to the board, not just, not just giving feedback that can be taken or left. I think the ultimate goal, my ultimate goal, when, if I'm reviewing a textbook, is I want to make sure that there is no bias, not for my beliefs or against my beliefs, that there is no bias, and there are no inaccuracies. Unfortunately, that's not the, I don't believe that that's the criteria that the state uses when they put things on the textbook list, and so the result is that you're going to end up with those things in there unless you're specifically checking to make sure that those are taken out, or, and that those books with those are not approved.
Melody.
That's an interesting comment, and I'll just go way out on a limb here and say, I don't know that it's possible to find textbooks that have no bias of any kind. If a textbook is written by a man, it's going to have a bias that a textbook written by a woman doesn't have, because people bring who they are to the process of writing textbooks. I don't, I don't know that that's a reasonable goal. I agree that it seems to me there ought to be some way with the proliferation of online technology to make textbooks available in some form online for people to review, because in our very mobile society, it's difficult to get people to come to one location or another to look at books, those who'd like to have an opportunity to participate. Again, I don't know what the licensing restrictions would be, but it seems like there would be some way that we could work out a better way for people to be involved in the textbook selection process. As far as textbooks that don't have any errors in them, again, I, I don't know that it's possible to find a textbook that is completely free of error. It's, I'm also very aware that we're in a world that's moving very quickly toward textbooks that are completely online, which again pushes the technology thing we were talking about earlier. There are many states in the country now that are looking at using online materials exclusively, because that's the direction the industry is going. So that's going to create some different scenarios in how we look at regard, review, and use textbooks. I think our teachers do a great job, by the way, of evaluating them.
Thank you.
Well, I think our teachers are professionals. I look at them as professionals, and I believe that professional educators want to have the best tools in their tool belt. We hold these teachers accountable for the success of their students. They want to pick the very best textbooks available, so they have a vested interest in this, and so I believe that they're the best people to make recommendations. I do believe that we have a good policy set in place for textbook review, and I also think that we have availability for parents to review. In the 20 years that I've been here, and in the entire time that my children were in school, I have to tell you that I never felt compelled to go review a textbook. I have to tell you that I never felt compelled to go review a textbook, because I had confidence in the, in the selection. And I knew that if I had a problem with anything, I could go up to the school and bring my problem to their attention and that they would help and remediate my concerns and that there were also policies in place to handle that. So I feel that in Williamson County, we do a very thorough job of providing textbooks. And I think we have the availability for review. I do believe that very few parents take that opportunity, because they have great trust in what we're doing in Williamson County schools.
This is, this is a really contentious issue. So does anybody want to, 90 seconds isn't long. Anybody want to follow up on that?
If I could get a moment, I would address a few, a few things. I made a couple notes. One, on the issue of bias, actually the form that we use or that our teachers use includes content is accurate and free of bias, and it has to exceeds, meets, or below expectations. So our teachers are actively checking for that. In terms of the, the textbooks being put online, that will be state law next year. It was not something that we could do previously because of copyright issues, but the law has changed and so we will now be empowered to do that. It is something that we will be doing in that sense. In terms of the online textbooks, it's something that we've wanted to do for, for years, but the publishing companies haven't always made that available for their own economic reasons. And then when we talk about parents reviewing textbooks, our parents review textbooks all the time. I, I know every textbook my child has had, I've reviewed in the sense that I've quizzed him for tests and I know I'm not alone in that. So even outside the formal process, our parents are doing this every single day during the school year.
Mr. Gabbard.
I will, I will say, from, from the process as a whole, superintendent sent out a survey of the administrators. And 30, roughly 30% of them said that the process didn't need, needed to be changed. But over, it was roughly 50, 55% of them said that there do need to be changes to, to the process. So our administrators are saying that they're, that it's not completely broken, but there do need, there do need to be changes. So I look forward to seeing that happen and seeing us evaluate the process, because, because it is resulting in some, in some books being in there. But I will say, from bias, just let me clarify what I mean by bias. So bias can be, can be bio omission of what you say and presenting opinion as fact. And so I, I, everybody's, everything's going to have a point of view, but as long as your point of view is presented as a point of view and not as fact, then I'm, I'm okay with it, with it being in there, because our kids need to, need to be able to tell between the two.
Anybody else want, yes ma'am.
Yes, sir. I want to make clear that everybody understands that those individuals who are reviewing, those teachers that are reviewing those textbooks on behalf of our district are certified in that content area. So they are very familiar with the, the standards, with what the information is that they need to deliver to the students that they serve. Part of the charge from the State Textbook Commission is that they provide materials with opposing sides of controversial issues, so that the students will be able to develop critical thinking skills. There may be part of the bias, but it is, is just simply to develop those critical thinking skills for those students. Thank you.
I, I do have to add something. Jay, I'm sorry, but your stat was wrong on that. The, the question that was asked was, how effective is the current textbook selection process? And the, the principals and assistant principals were given a scale of one to five, with one being needs to be overhauled and five is no change needs to, no change needed. 69% of our principals gave it a four or a five. 0% gave it a one, in that it needs to be changed, and only 5% gave it a two.
So how many, how many gave it a three?
Well, the remainder, so a three.
How many gave it, how, I took out, I took out the fives, and I was quoting the fours and the threes, the ones that would say, there, there needs to be some change, but not, not a complete overhaul.
Absolutely. So on average, it was a 3.9 on a scale of one to five.
Right.
May I add a comment?
Sure.
One of the things that we heard overwhelmingly from our administrators and teachers during this last process, as there was conversation about changing the process, is that what is needed is more time to review the textbooks. It's a very tense process, very laborious process, and they felt like that they needed more time. That would have been the helpful factor there for them. And that's the comment I heard from teachers as well. They just needed more time to sit with the material. That's what I heard.
All right. One of the things that really hit the news this last year was, was public schools hiring lobbyists. Do you support or oppose Williamson County school systems having a professional lobbyist? Or, and if, if you're opposed to that, how do you propose Williamson County schools having a voice in the state legislature?
Where are you starting?
Ms. Anderson.
I support the hiring of lobbyists on an as-needed basis. Three years ago, Williamson County Schools was faced with a piece of legislation that we felt as a board and as a district would not be beneficial for our students or district. We spent a great deal of time on the Hill, not only talking with our legislators, but talking with other legislators. That's not always the very, the most effective way for us to convey our message. We were successful in that attempt, but last year, and I want to let you know also, that we meet three to four times annually with our legislative delegation. During our process last year, there were a number of pieces of legislation that had been introduced that we were concerned about. We also were very interested in inducing a bill that was known as the High Performing School Flexibility Act, that it would allow districts that met certain criteria, the opportunity to opt out of certain criteria that, from the state. In consultation with our legislative delegation, it was recommended that we hire a lobbyist to help represent the needs of our district. And we did that, and we're very successful in that, and we have felt that it was a very good use of our taxpayer money. Thank you.
I actually do support having lobbyists. It's, with the amount that we spend for $30,000, that's a partial FTE, a partial person for the amount of, for the amount of time. And I recognize that our superintendent could get a meeting on the Hill with anybody at any time, and, and still does. That doesn't, doesn't replace that, that, that time that he can spend there. But for the amount of time that you're getting and for the effectiveness, I think it is necessary. And as the top performing school district in the, in the state, we do need a voice and we need to share that. And so I'm, I'm completely fine with that. Where, where I am a little bit uncomfortable is, from a, from a, from a fiscal standpoint, is I just, I just want to make sure that, that we are, we, recognizing that we do have lobbyists that are from the county. And so I want to make sure that we are strategic in working with the county on that, to make sure that we, we could potentially be going up and lobbying two, two separate sides of the issue. And I don't think that's appropriate. I don't know if it's ever been done, but it's, it's just something that, that would make sense that that, that effort is coordinated between the two. I think most everything we do is coordinated, but that in particular would, would be an enormous waste of resources.
In general, and at first blush, I, I don't like the idea of taxpayers paying for lobbyists. However, that being said, I recognize that Williamson County's school district, because it is an exceptionally high-performing school district, the groups that are in place to lobby the Hill on behalf of school districts often aren't advocating what's best for Williamson County, because they're advocating for school districts that are at different performance levels across the state. And sometimes what's good for them is not good for us at all. And so I do think there are times when we have to step out and make sure that there's a voice on our behalf. And I do think if we put the load of all of that lobbying onto our superintendent of schools, that's not the best use of his time.
Nick.
Yes, I, I would agree with that. I think that the rules of engagement have very much changed on the Hill from years ago. And the level of, of bills that are going through are coming through at a, at a very high, fast pace. We don't have the personnel to, to sit on the Hill and watch all these things come through. And the other thing that's going on is that there are organizations like Student First, Students First, which are contributing to campaigns and they're hiring lobbyists. And I don't believe that what, what they're advocating for and what we would want as a high-performance school district are, are in alignment at all. So I think we need to have a voice there. I do think it needs to be specific and within very targeted reasons to go, because we, we don't have infinite resources. We have very limited resources and we have to be targeted with our approach. But I would also like to say that there are cities in our, in our area that are combining forces and hiring lobbyists, because truly, the rules of engagement have changed.
Will.
You know, I'm, I'm less tied to lobbyists than, than Williamson County schools having a voice on the Hill and representation in whatever form that, that needs to take. If we say we're, we're not going to, to do a lobbyist, then who do we have as that? And I think by default, it becomes our superintendent, in which case we are taking an actually higher-paid employee and putting him in the role of a lobbyist and for less efficient with the taxpayers' dollars in that sense. The other thing that we're doing is we're, we're losing our superintendent, who should be here managing our schools, and giving him a job that he's less suited for in, in that case. To Jay's point, which I think is a very valid one, it's certainly great to have him there as, as a supportive resource and to play that role, but to make him kind of that full-time representative is, is not a good use of, of our resources in that case. To Ms. Anderson's point as well, our lobbyists came about in consultation with our local delegation that, that, you know, they said, we agree with, with you and a lot of these issues that you're, you're pushing for, but please know there's, there's only four of us. And, you know, alone, we can't get things accomplished, so we need additional voices in that sense. So not only were, you know, the lobbyists hired because of those conversations, but specifically the, the actual lobbyists we hired with their recommendation, hire this particular individual, we think that this would be the best for you in that sense.
Okay. This next question is, started as, as a question on a specific issue, however, teachers often express a need for a designated collaboration time during the day. And, and the question is, should the superintendent or the school board make that kind of policy? And where is the line between what the superintendent should do and what the, and decisions that the school board should, should be making? Start with Mr. Gabbard.
Say, say the last, say the last part again.
What's, what's the, where's the line between decisions that the school board should be making and administrative decisions that the director of school should be making?
Gotcha. Well, the, the collaboration time, and, and I haven't, I've, I've talked to people as a, as a parent, it's a Power Mondays, it's just the thorn in, in my side. And about, my kids will, will get there a few minutes early and realize that it's Power Monday, I could have slept in. But it's, I recognize it, and the more, the more you teach in teams, the more you're going to have to collaborate. So it was a, it was, it was a pilot process that I think has been very successful. And, and I understand we're going to, we're going to start rolling it out to, to some of the elementary schools, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken. But somebody probably knows a whole lot more about that up here than I do. But I think it's, to the extent that it has to deal with the schedule, then certainly it's going to have to be coordinated at the, at the system level. If there's some times, if there's something that, that can be done without manipulating what time students come, then, and the, and an administrator has a, has an idea that they can work with in the existing school day, then, then I say more power to them. And, and I would, and I, I hope that we would support them in, in doing something and at least creating a pilot and see if it can, it can help.
Ms. Morris.
Well, it, it seems to me that there are kind of three, three levels going, going on here. I mean, there's the, there is the principal level, at which the principal who understands his or her school community most intimately makes decisions that affect that school. Then there's the, the superintendent level looking system-wide, and then there's the board making policies that govern the system. I, I think if we're going to go to, to some sort of a system-wide collaborative time and that's going to impact schedule, then certainly the school board would need to speak into that. If it's going to remain more at the, at the discretion or, that's probably not the correct word, but if it's going to remain more a school-by-school or a high schools and not middle schools, middle schools and not elementary schools level, then it's probably something that needs to be dealt with within the administration. I, I'd love to see more consistency in the schedule across the board, just as a, from a parent's perspective. That would be, I think, helpful to families in terms of planning and transportation needs.
The way I understand it, from the administrators that I've talked to, this time is precious time and they're utilizing it. Now, I believe that principals set the tone in their schools, and if they're utilizing this time effectively, it pays big dividends across the school climate. Over the years that I've been involved with Williamson County schools, there has been an unevenness with regards to the Power Mondays. I think it's a good program. I think it's something that's going to be going forward. As an oversight board, it, my belief is that Dr. Looney and the central office bring forward things to us and discuss them with us, and then we, we ask questions and we look into it. But they're bringing a recommendation to us, and normally, when they bring a recommendation to us, they have very good, valid reasons for doing it. So I believe it's something that will get expanded. I think it's something that the principals feel that has been working. And I think it depends on the principal at that particular school, how well it is working within that school environment. But I, I do believe it's going to continue. And I think it is going to be rolled out to the middle schools. That's my understanding.
Mr. Welch.
Well, the professional development is, is set in advance. It's approved by the school board and it's done in collaboration with the, the central office, the principals, and what works best. The Power Mondays itself was a best practice that was developed in the schools, worked well. It, it sort of spread that, you know, Dr. Looney is, you know, works with his principals in that sense. And then they come to the Board of Education and say, this is our recommendation, this is who we talked to, and, and from there, we typically will, will approve things that, that everyone is on board with. Of course, you know, you're never going to get uniform 100% agreement across a very large issue, but, you know, from what we've been told, there, there is very much buy-in from the schools in that sense. It, it does create challenges for, for some parents, I do realize, but that's something that we've also looked at, is what type of programs and everything else can we put in place? So that time is, is being maximized and best used for our students on there.
We implemented the Power Mondays a number of years ago as a pilot program at one of our high schools. And because of the success that the teachers felt like they experienced during that time, the other principals stepped forward and indicated that they would also like to use that, have that opportunity for collaboration in their buildings. So the board moved forward with that, did do that, keeping in mind that a number of years ago, we had what we called Flex Wednesdays. Those were where students were released early from, from school. That created more challenges than, in my mind, than the Power Mondays have created, because students were dismissed early from school. It was an inconvenience for parents, because there was no opportunity for the students to remain in the building. They were dismissed. So, so if working parents had to make arrangements for childcare, transportation was an issue, there were just a myriad of issues. And the time was not being used wisely. I think the current plan that we have in place with the Power Mondays, it has an accountability piece in there, there's an expectation from the board and from the administration that that time is being used wisely. And I, I believe that if you look at what the results have been, the teachers are very appreciative and they, and, and the results speak for themselves. Thank you.
We've had a few questions submitted from folks that, when they found out this was going on, wrote in. So we want to ask a couple of these, these questions. Ms. Ball wrote and asked, while Williamson County is not the most diverse school system in the, in the country, we do have a great deal of diversity, of religious diversity and racial diversity in the, in the, in the system. How do you or how will you make sure that your decisions are inclusive for all, of all Williamson County students?
Starting with me?
Uh-huh.
Great question. Thank you, Ms. Ball. I, I think one of the, one of the things that's in the oath that the school board members take is that they will make their decisions without any personal or political agenda, any personal or political leanings. And I, I can't quote the oath, I don't have it in front of me right now. But I, but I think it's extremely important that, that we be very mindful of the diversity of students, the diversity in our population, and that we, and that we make decisions for, in the best interests of all 35,000 students in the district, regardless of their ethnicity, their religious affiliation. And the only way we can do that is if we set those things aside as individuals and come to the table to collaborate, to, to work together, to find the best possible solutions without any personal or political or religious agenda that enters into the mix. I think that's extremely important, and that's part of the oath that we take as school board members, and it's certainly the way I would plan to conduct myself as a member of the school board.
I think Williamson County has become a much more diverse county, and I believe that we do a good job that we do a good job of welcoming all of our students, making sure that we're presenting our information in a manner in which there's no judgments about any religious affiliations, things like that nature. I think it's important to be sensitive. I think it's important to be inclusive. I think it's important to learn about each other's cultures. I also think it's important to recognize that we have diversity within our socioeconomics. We are considered a very affluent county, however, within our midst and in some of our schools, we have a free and reduced population. They need special consideration with regards to how they're able to participate in extracurricular activities and how we fund that school, if we can get additional funding to that school to accommodate some of those needs, to make sure that those students and children have every opportunity for learning and to participate in all of our programs. Thank you.
I grew up in a military family and later served myself, went to high school overseas in Panama for a few years and then served in Europe, so I think it's been beneficial to have that exposure to different cultures and experiences and people. One of, my son graduated from what's considered our most diverse school here in Williamson County, although from where we moved, it's Williamson County is much less diverse and, you know, I'd love that he'd had the experience of being able to kind of judge his friends for who they are as people and not, you know, the color of their skin or the size of their house or anything that way in that sense. One of the things, I wish my opponent was here, is one of her campaign co-hosts led the charge to try and get us to stop feeding breakfast in the schools because he felt that it was a waste of funds that we were following federal law in providing breakfast to children on the free and reduced meal plan. And he thought that was kind of an odd stance for someone who wanted to be on the Board of Education that, you know, this would be kind of your lead charge to deny children who would otherwise go hungry breakfast in the morning in that sense.
Ms. Anderson.
As a board, we serve a very diverse student population and I think as has been expressed around the table this evening, most people think of us as a very affluent county and that all children have everything that they need, but as a member of this board, I can tell you that that is far from the fact. We worked very hard to make sure that we can meet the needs of all students in the district and our code of ethics is, if anyone will read our code of ethics, I think they will see that it's important for us as individuals to at all times think of students first when we make decisions and how it will affect their education and development. And we have to reach across the table to make sure that we are touching all individuals in this county and that we're not making decisions based upon an individual's socioeconomics, their ethnicity or any other criteria that may be identified. Thank you.
No, I'll agree that we're more diverse than appearance. If you're looking at a 10,000-foot view, you say, "Hey, from a socioeconomic background, we've got to make sure we take care of all of our students and we can't overlook the fact that some of the families," you know, like for instance, the bring-your-own-technology. I mean, that might work well in one area, might be much less participation, so we've got to make sure we accompany that with probably more technology in the schools where the families have the least means to be able to apply that. But, and I agree, we have to respect everyone and make sure that we're not infringing upon anyone's rights or freedoms or anything like that, but at the same time, we do, in this country typically, we're going to rule by majority while respecting the minority and so you don't really want it to be a tail wagging the dog scenario where you've got a small minority. In some cases, it might be that we do have to bend over backwards to accommodate, but in some cases, maybe it's not. And so we make, we've got to make sure that we have to respect the majority as well as the minority is my point.
Where do we start with the let, start with you now?
Start with Vicki now.
Okay.
Okay. Well, this kind of follows up on that. We had another question about how do you feel about the inclusion of students with significant disabilities in classrooms with typical students? There may be a situation of federal law, but it was a question that was asked that we wanted.
Well, I believe it is the law that we accommodate our students in the least restrictive environment possible. And again, we have to approach these things with sensitivity. If you have a severely autistic child and they need resources in that room, then you need to accommodate that child so that they will have a special aide with them and they're going to be in the classroom. But if the need of the child in the special education arena is much higher than that, then there are times when other accommodations outside of our school are required and then we get, we, our budget accommodates that and pays for that as far as that student's getting what they need from the available resources that we have. Sometimes children are so severely, have such severe needs that they, we don't have the ability to accommodate them inside the school district and we provide for them externally in, I can't think of the name of the place, but there's some services that are available that we utilize and we pay for. So I think we do a good job within our special education department and actually we have quite a number of people that moved to Williamson County specifically seeking out the special education teachers that we provide in our school system.
You stole my line right there then. Yes, our, the students, individual students' IEP is what really defines how we deal with the student based upon their needs and their requirements. We, I think we have been, become kind of a recognized school district for special needs families both within the state and within the surrounding region. I was having a conversation with Dr. Webb last weekend even, who was very much bragging, said, "This is one of the best hires I've ever made for one of her special education teachers," who said that there were parents that were coming as far away as northern Kentucky that they had heard about what a great teacher she was and how well she worked with children with autism and just really trying to get into that particular zone in that sense. So on the other side, above and beyond kind of what the IEP defines and how we treat our students, we also have other programs like the Best Buddies Program, which partners our special needs students with other, you know, students in their schools and the community, Best Buddies Prom, a lot of like that. So I think our schools themselves, the community tries to be very inclusive and, you know, make their fellow students feel very welcome within the community also.
Williamson County was probably the leader statewide for inclusive practices for students with special needs, probably about 13 or 14 years ago. Since that time, I think we've made remarkable progress and I think as Ms. Vought and Mr. Welch have indicated, families are moving here for those services because they do know that we do have inclusive services. We do meet students' needs through our IEPs and our Student Support Services personnel do a remarkable job at the administrative level and in our schools to make sure that those students' needs are provided for as spelled out in their plan. Thank you.
I agree that we've got a great special ed department and the inclusion in the classroom is, if you're a parent of one of those children, you know, you want them to, you want them to feel as quote-unquote "normal" as possible and I so completely understand that. And my kids have had numerous children and I, even going back, I remember we had to install a handicap ramp in Brentwood Middle School back in the day, I guess, but because of one student and, you know, that's the right thing to do and you have, you absolutely have to make the accommodations that you need to make. And, but then I think we do a really good job of weighing that individual's needs with the needs of the class and so if you, so because I've seen examples of the IEPs where a student will be in, will be with his classmates during a couple of subjects and then mostly like specials, they will, they'll spend it with the class and music and art and all the specials and then, but they'll get specific tailored instruction on the things that they can't keep up with the classroom on. So I've seen it, I've seen it work extremely well in all ranges of the spectrum, so I'm very pleased with how we work.
As well as being a really active parent involved in the schools, I've also served as a substitute teacher in Williamson County Schools. I'm not an active substitute right now, but I've substituted and I've substituted for TAs who work specifically with special needs students. And I've seen the excellent ways that we impact students, both students who have IEPs and students who are around those students and the way they learn to support each other and help each other. I do think that there may be times when a further review is required if one student's behavior in the classroom is negatively impacting the learning opportunities for the other students in the classroom. And when that happens consistently, I think there are occasions when further review is needed.
We started with you that time, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. This is going to be, I think we're coming up on 90 minutes. This will probably be our last question and it was submitted by a citizen from, in the county. Do you think the Williamson County school system is headed in the right direction or has it gotten off on the right, wrong track? And if there's part, if your answer is part yes and part no, give us an example of each. And I think we're starting with Eric.
Well, I don't know how you could argue that we're not on the right track. You look at, you know, and we're not a perfect system and, you know, there will always be things to improve, but you look at where we've been going in the past four years, our ACT scores, we're going to break our all-time district record again for the third year in a row. Our TCAP scores are up in, you know, again, breaking district records. You go back four years and we had three Ds and a B in academic growth, which really measures the performance of the schools. A lot of people don't realize that. Fast forward four years, we have straight As in academic growth, which again measures school performance or the district performance, first time ever in the district history that we've had that. Our fine arts program has been significantly expanded, more facilities, you know, theaters, we've hired fine arts specialists to add curriculum to it. We've added a strings program. We've added to our foreign languages program. We work to upgrade our athletic facilities, you know. Certainly there's budgetary challenges and things like that, but we're really starting to get that recognition that we've looked for where we're not just measuring ourselves anymore as the best school district in the state, which we are. We're really looking at where our place is nationally and trying to become one of those elite school districts that's recognized from coast to coast and I think we're well on our way. So definitely I think we're trending in the right direction.
Ms. Anderson.
I believe that Williamson County Schools is definitely headed in the right direction. As Mr. Welch has indicated, we are the highest performing school district in the state, not only in performance, but also in growth. And that was a difficult challenge for this district before. We performed well, but we, our students did not grow well. I think one of the biggest turning points for our district was the community's development of the strategic plan. It's put our focus on what our community values and thinks is important for Williamson County Schools. We're very fortunate to live in a community that supports and values public education. We have set new records on ACT testing. We have set new records for proficiency and advanced on our TCAP scores since we have implemented this plan over the last four years. And I do believe that we are headed in the right direction. Thank you.
Absolutely. All measures and indicators would say that we're moving in the right direction and I feel like, I feel like that's definitely the case. I think our parents, our teachers, our administrators, our students, I don't think would have it any other way. Like I said, people are coming here because of the schools. They're educated parents, they're educated and they're educated themselves and they're going to, they're going to be, take an active role in their kid's education, they're going to push them. And so I think that's the root cause. I think what I don't want, what I don't want anybody to hear me say is, I want to look at that root cause and I believe that's it. I don't want anybody to read into the fact that, hey, well, we, you know, we started the implementation of Common Core standards three years ago and now we're the highest performing district and, you know, and our ACT scores are the highest that they've ever been and try to draw some correlation to them because I don't think any such correlation exists yet. I think it's too soon to tell. That being said, everything that we're doing is going in the right direction and I think we need to tweak things along the way and that's what we're here for is oversight and changing that living document in the strategic plan is necessary and I think we can continue on that track.
I'm excited about what's happening in Williamson County Schools. I'm excited to have been a part as a parent of students in the last several years to see the growth that's happened in our county and the way in which our school system has grown and developed. I'm excited that my son is going to complete his last two years at Independence and the things that are happening. I think there's a real, I think, yes, I think we're headed in the right direction and I think there's a real feeling of momentum as we're headed in this strong direction. I think the strong focused leadership that we've had the last few years has really contributed to building momentum in the trajectory that we're on right now to becoming an elite school system nationally and that's very exciting to me. People ask me why I wanted to be a part of the school board, what I wanted to fix or what I wanted to change and I've often said, you know, there are always changes that need to be made. As we're growing, there are always challenges and there will always be changes that need to be made, but I think we have a really strong school system and I look forward to being a part of helping that system grow stronger each year. It's exciting to me to see what's happening. And one of the things, I'll just say quickly, one of the things that's been exciting to me to witness as a very active part of the PTSO the last few years has been the increased emphasis on getting the private sector to come alongside and undergird and be a part of supporting the school system. And I think those kinds of things are very exciting that are happening in Williamson County right now and I certainly want to see us continue to move forward in this direction.
Last but not least.
Well, absolutely, I concur. Our glass is more than half-full. We have so much to capitalize on in Williamson County Schools and it is absolutely the number one reason people cite for moving here is our terrific school systems. So I believe that we have a great recipe for success. We have wonderful teachers, incredible students and parents' support and what we need to do is stay focused on what's important. And what's important is the students first and educating them and maintaining our focus on being a high-performing school district. I think the strategic plan was a remarkable product of community input and I think that going forward, if we can maintain staying focused on what we were told by our community in the strategic plan, what they valued, we will continue to be successful. And I think the sky's the limit here. I really do. I'm excited. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Having served in public office for a while, I understand how tough this is and I think that everyone who's listening to this ought to, owes you a debt of gratitude for showing up and for answering these questions. They weren't all easy questions, but you answered them and we really do appreciate it and I think we should give them a round of applause. I want to thank Brentwood Home Page, Franklin Home Page, Spring Hill Home Page, Brentwood Communications for sponsoring this, but we appreciate it. Thank you very much and good luck in the election.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow, Eric, you killed it. That's great.